All right, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Hancock County Commissioners to order.
Yeah, so I'm gonna move the docket agenda as presented with the exception of adding an item between nineteen C and D titled executive session and prefer with legal capital concerning three rivers solar contracts as permitted by one MRSA four oh five sixteen. Uh since inconvenience uh may result with the matter postponed.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, a public hearing.
Yeah, so we call a public hearing for the designation of the municipal tax increment financing district known as the Three Rivers Solar Power District Development and Tax Increment Financing District.
And before you open up, we do have one that came in by. Dale and Jan.
Yeah, so we can add that to the record.
Yes.
We have one email uh in opposition. Is there anybody here today to discuss it?
Uh, yes. Morning Commissioners, excuse the code, Stephen Wagner County Attorney. Uh, I just said, uh recap, you you had this matter before you several times now, and we've had a number of uh public presentations by both representatives of uh Three Rivers as well as uh uh myself on the basics of a tip, how that would work, the proposal that's been uh presented to you in terms of creating a tax increment financing district that would also include a credit enhancement agreement that would get some portion of the uh funds that are included in the tax increment financing uh to the company and some portion reserved to the county. Uh in parallel to this, we also have for you a community benefits agreement. In your package, you've received a uh overall uh the public document that summarizes the benefits proposed by the project and these issues before you, I certainly uh won't go over that in detail again as we've done that a few times here, but if you or any members of the public have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I just also want to direct your attention that we do have uh three representatives from the developer here as well.
Uh do we have any members of the public who don't like to speak on it? Ready? Anybody online? Wanted to speak about it?
I do not, um I'm admitting people, but I don't think there's anybody who would. I don't see anybody speaking up or.
With Three Rivers, do you have anything you'd like to add or say?
We don't have anything else to add, but we'd have to answer any questions when it gets to the agenda items. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I guess we close the public hearing with one uh email on the record.
All right, so the public hearing is ended. Uh we're gonna move on to public comment, though. Do we have any public comment today uh for maybe not related, obviously, to uh the tax credit?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move to approve the minutes of the January seventeenth Commissioner's Special Meeting as presented in the draft dated today, February sixth, twenty twenty-four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh we do have some employee recognition today uh for Julie Curtis for twenty years of service. Uh Julie isn't gonna come down to the meeting today because she hasn't been feeling the best, so uh just wanna make sure we all congratulate Julie and thank her for twenty years of service. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I'm gonna move to approve the minutes of, going backwards, that's not, that's not. I'm gonna move to recognize and thank Julie Curtis for twenty years of service to Hancock County. Thank you and uh congratulations.
A second to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For some further recognition from Sheriff's Department Sheriff, what do we got first today?
Good morning, and I would just, on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, like to recognize Julie, she's very helpful in Sheriff charities over the years, and uh she's a very good person.
We do, uh first of all, I recommend recognize the promotion of Dakota Dupree to Patrol Lieutenant, step fifteen G thirty-seven eighty-one, effective two one twenty-four. He will be pinned by his wife. So I'm gonna move to recognize the promotion of Dakota Dupree to Patrol Lieutenant, congratulations. We don't wanna need blood drawn, okay?
Yeah, that's two, I'm sorry.
I'll just add another little piece to that. I'm dating myself, but I had Dakota as a bad scoop.
I only, I only.
It's all worked out well.
Yes, it did. Yes, it did.
Being recognized, a promotion of Robert Moran Patrol Sergeant, step fourteen L forty-one fifty-nine, effective two ten twenty-four, he'll be pinned by his wife.
Move to recognize the promotion of Robert Moran Patrol Sergeant, congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Next, recognize the promotion of Marcus Downs to Patrol Sergeant, step fourteen F thirty-four eighty-three, effective two ten twenty-four, and he'll be pinned by his mom and dad. Prove the recognition of the promotion of Marcus Downs to Patrol Sergeant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Outstanding. Congratulations.
Marcus.
Marcus.
That's Marcus.
We'll go to E, uh accept the resignation of Lieutenant Jacob Day effective February seventeen, twenty twenty-four. We will miss Jake, he's a very, very valuable member of the Sheriff's Office, but he had an incredible business opportunity. Uh and I would not blame him for taking that opportunity, so. Great request, I ask to accept his resignation.
I'm gonna move to accept the resignation of Lieutenant Jacob Day, effective February seventeenth, thank him for his years of service and best of luck.
Thank you. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have requested approval to hire Ernest Fitz Junior as a civil process coordinator at pay grade eleven, step F one twenty-nine seventy-five, effective February ten, twenty twenty-four.
So move. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a great history with the Fitz family. Uh his grandmother was the first person that ever contributed to my campaign the first year ago. Uh and his dad uh is the person that unfortunately got me involved, lost the thirty-three year plan, so. Uh he's a real great job.
Great.
You wanna do G X or you wanna do the last two administrated ones? Do those quickly, you wanna jump to H and I and do those, those are just quickies, and then I'm gonna turn it over to uh the two lieutenants to discuss the uh the proposal.
That's fair.
Over to that?
Yeah.
Okay, administratively remove Riss of Bishop from the county payroll, please.
Some aware.
Yes.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Administratively remove Stephen DeFoule from the county payroll.
Some of them. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, uh and last, request ARPA funding and purchase in cap printers and related materials and supplies, the sum has changed, we had this uh uh talked a little bit, I guess, in the past about bids, I'll turn this over to Lieutenant Attorney, Lieutenant Dupree, to explain what that is.
Did you guys copy it? Appreciate it. Yes.
Okay, so uh just procedurally, what's on the table now, because this was, this was table forward, uh was a motion from the last meeting, and that was to treat this. Ten or minutes, but uh it was the purchase twenty-one uh for nineteen five ninety-five thirty-two uh from Advance. That time we thought it was a sole source. So I think procedurally what has to happen is uh that's now on the table, we probably have to vote on that would be the cleanest way, and then we start over.
All right, I'll call it over.
So I'm uh I'm gonna vote no because of all the information.
As well.
Okay, so that motion fails.
Great.
Right, square one. Uh obviously, you have a lot of numbers in front of you in regards to these printers, and I think there was some discussion um earlier in the week about uh Commissioner Clark being okay with purchasing sixteen. Um and or Lieutenant Dupree has a number that would have reflected the sixteen that we were looking to purchase originally of fifteen thousand one forty-five thirty-two. Um we have since obviously gotten more bids in reference to these printers from um not only Advanced Electronic Design, but the Glacier Computer Northeast MDT. And yesterday, actually, we decided that it would be better to go with a universally mounted printer as opposed to the headrest mounted printers that we did poorly before. And I received a bid from the Glacier Computer of thirteen thousand fifty-five B three, so less than the sixteen that were previously approved uh or talked about.
So to me, you're still, you're still twenty-one cars on.
Correct.
Okay, so to me, the course of action, just to get everything in line, stay consistent with the purchasing policies. Well, I'm gonna read this motion and then make sure that it works.
True.
So uh I would move to request the Sheriff solicit bids that consistent with the county's purchasing policy for the purchase of twenty-one in cap printers, supplies and related materials, since it has recently become apparent that this is not a sole source project. And and that this project ultimately can be paid for using ARPA funds. The only reason to do that is, I mean, I think everything's here, but just to make sure that we're consistent with the policy. Is that fine?
Yeah, underpaid.
Course of action.
Completely understand.
Yeah, and and that memorializes twenty-one cars, because that's what we have.
Correct.
And that gets us into a, you know, one um, you know, one method of doing business for non-law enforcement. Uh mine.
Correct.
So Sheriff, how do you feel the quality of the printers? Yeah, there's some discussion about the quality of how many.
I think they need to be everybody, because even if I had a printer in in mind, and trust me, I don't write a lot of summonses. I would have to, if I didn't have that printer and didn't have that ability in my vehicle, um I would have to come back and manually take care of the summons that was written. And it would, we would have to send the copy to that to the state and within five days, uh and that's how that process works. Now, ready to see, once they decide that they're gonna write the summons, they get the information, it's in there, they can scan the licenses, and they get that in there, they push a button and it's gone, you never have to touch it again.
So not only does it help us on that side of it, so the the printers are basically, they coincide with this e-ticket program. Um the e-ticket program does more than just e-tickets, it does warnings, it does the demographics, which we're gonna be required to do uh by law starting in July of this year. Uh so what it's gonna do is, as opposed to having to use two platforms for, you know, having sixteen people with the the printers in the e-ticket program, and then have the five people that don't have it, it's just gonna put it down to one platform, and it's automatically reporting to the AG's office all the demographic information that we had to have to provide to them starting January, July first.
And the other piece of that would be as if we had a spill-in system that half of my crew was using, and the other half was using another reporting system.
So we would have to manually send these reports every month for the five people, have they, if they've stopped any cars, as opposed to just allowing have the e-ticket system with the printer um to 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 complete that task.
But beyond just, in a sense, beyond the e-ticket uh program as well, it'll be a, it'll be dual purpose, it'll serve as a benefit for subpoenas, protection orders, things of that nature, that we would generally have somebody from maybe Deer Isle or Stonington driving into the office to grab that hard copy, to then go out and serve. Sort of allow them to print it right there from their vehicle, I'm gonna save both the time, the money paid in labor, but also the gas, um and just be much more efficient movementally.
Yeah, well, the purchasing policy is they go, they go out, you know, go out to bid for the same thing from all the vendors, and then they come, when the bids come back, we, you know, for me, that that's consistent with the policy, I'm fine with the amounts, I mean, it's what uh it's what other departments are doing, municipal departments.
Police.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it, you know, by harbor.
And I, I spoke to Jimmy Willis, tail end of last week, one of the mornings driving in, and he said that all the printers, get used to them, but don't buy, don't get the software now, because there's a big upgrade that's coming that add all these features that they uh talked about. Uh and there's no end date for the software, so in other words, if they're not ready to go, because it takes a long time to get printers until August, the software is still gonna be available, and it's still gonna be available for you, so take advantage of it now, we get that software for you.
So I'm very excited to say in return.
Well, I, I would guess, Commissioner, that we'll probably come back with copies of what you have, I'll have them go downstairs today and say we want bids, and I'll have them submit them to your office, so we can open them there.
Per the policy.
Per the policy, absolutely.
So it remains clear what my motion is? You second it?
Yeah. I'll second it just in case.
Second, second, second.
Uh all those in favor, I called the all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's all I had, gentlemen, thank you very much, and thank you for recognizing my crew. Thank you.
All right, John, tell us what you did today.
So. Our project for the broadband project, um good at connects love, um they did get their response back, and our fee to fill in the station that year this week, I'll tell you this last. So we're something, with the understanding that, you know, the art money needs to be.
Yeah, we're excited.
You know what I mean? Sooner or later, they need to make decisions, you guys decide where that money will go. Okay, question about that.
And we have your report.
That's a different one. Yeah, sorry, first one's true dependent, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, and then um Mount Desert is asking commissioners for one hundred and forty-one thousand to support a broadband project. Um it's been a while, um but I'll say it's similar to Lemoine from a while ago. Um Darrellin couldn't be here this morning, uh right, we pulled, if we need him, it's commission is, they get something.
I know, so we got buy-in from both the National Park Service and the town, obviously.
What's that?
So we had, we had buy-in from both the National Park Service and the town.
Yes, yeah.
So before we go further, I'm just gonna deal with the first part of this, which was move to accept and file admission broadband, like the report is presented.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, now that the uh uh what you're speaking of, that meets the criteria, we're consistent with what we've done in the past, it means the mission of ARPA fund.
That is.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed, so we can also implement a little smaller part of it.
And your, your recommendation is?
To move forward.
Move forward. Okay, so I'm gonna move to approve contributing one hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, county's ARPA funds towards Town and Mountain Search broadband. Build out my spectrum pro, my spectrum project, provided that Town and Mountain Search proven receives a local match, National Park Service contributes uh eighty-four thousand ninety-six dollars in an agreement assigned between the Town and Mountain Search Spectrum to extend their network, to reach, to reach and serve the unserved household.
And again, discussion.
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask about the timing of the financing, are we, are they expecting, are they, are they going in for grant funds or?
Um Brian, you know the timing? Thank you, you go, yeah, can't hear you, Brian.
Sorry about that. We're ready to sign the contract with Spectrum at any time. Um so once we have the uh commitment from the county, we're a hundred percent funded, um and we can move forward.
Oh, in the same manner as Lemoine, I don't, I didn't know if it was gonna be like a half, half upfront.
Oh, no, then they'll, yes, then they'll send a request.
Right.
To Michael.
Okay, okay.
The whole amount.
Okay, thank you.
And again, this is, you know, one of the reasons for the ARPA funds, it, it, it meets the criteria, and it's great they got this project going.
Yes.
Yeah.
A long time coming.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, now we're ready for a presentation from Molly Hatchwell.
Thank you.
Very much, thanks, John.
Good morning, thank you for giving me a few minutes, you, as you kindly did a couple of months ago. Um I'm Molly Hatchwell from the Cultural Alliance of Maine, um I just wanted to say a few words about who I am, why I'm here, and then also just let you know who else is in the room with me. Um the Cultural Alliance of Maine is a fairly new organization, uh we're funded by grants, we're not, you know, paid by any organizations to do what we do, but we exist to help build the capacity, the connectedness, and the spirit of collaboration among cultural organizations for the benefit of Maine. Um and that sometimes that means local efforts like this, and sometimes that means statewide. Um I live in Lemoine, and my office is just down the street, it's my happy pleasure of seeing me today. Um and I just, you know, I didn't ask anybody to do this, but I just wanna highlight who's in the room here and just go around quickly, so you have a sense of like, hmm, this is the benefit. Would you mind just, we'll just go around and say who you are, what organization you're from?
Hi, I'm Sarah Lesko, I'm the Director of the Ellsworth Public Library, right next door.
Lisa Lab, Director of the Buckham Memorial Library, Bucksford.
Pam Duell, of the interim Executive Director for the Stonington Opera House, which is organized by Opera House Arts. Uh Carla Haskell, representing Ellsworth Historical Society.
David Weiss, the Executive Director of Northeast Historic Film, that runs the Animal Theater in Bucksford.
Jane Don Allen, representing Northeast Historic Film at the Animal Theater.
Julia Gray, the Wilson Museum in Cassidy May.
Kathy Yost, Woodlawn and Elkhorn.
Jacob Portell, representing the Training Range.
Larry Wall, representing the Historical Society of Buckham Memorial Library in Puckus and Bucksford.
Who else is here in this room as well?
DJ Keenan, representing the um Ellsworth Area Chamber of Commerce.
Carter Romano, Executive Director of Heart of the Honor.
Sorry, Nick Turner is online.
And Nick Turner is online, yeah. So just so you know, I, you know, kindly had the opportunity to prepare a little more detail about this request that I sort of like vaguely alluded to before, just to, you know, kind of introduce the concept. So I put out a survey to Hancock County organizations, um and did the best I could to make sure as many as possible uh knew about it, because I was, you know, told that you wanted a scope, which is a reasonable thing. Um so just to give a little bit of context around this request, um you know, this is a really rare opportunity to invest in a certain niche of infrastructure in the county. Um and it's an infrastructure that relates to education, to health, tourism, um there's a lot of benefits, economic impacts, many, many things that you can find elsewhere, and I'd be very delighted to tell you more about that, but specifically in Hancock County with the National Heritage Area coming, there's a really enormous opportunity that hinges very greatly on the people in this room um to bring in federal dollars to the county and to bring in tourism and increase the experience of people who live here and work here as well. Um the, the money that we're asking for is for capital investments, so you know, everybody in this room has a building need, that's not like, you know, they just decided to do it, it's to to improve, or to, in some cases, maintain or protect the experience that um Hancock County citizens and statewide and forests um have come to expect and rely on from them, and sometimes it's about um aging, wear and tear, sometimes it's about accommodating remote work, which is an increasingly important, just tourism, that said, if nothing else. Um you know, a friend of mine uses the Ellsworth Library as his office, because he's a contractor, so there's just like a lot of touch points to a lot of different things in the county. So the request, you know, it's up to two million, as I said, but the, the, the sizes of grants that would make a large impact on being able to leverage philanthropic money, um kickoff efforts to, you know, raise the remainder from elsewhere, certainly would be possible to fund everything, obviously, but you know, what's really critical is to just make a big, a big enough dent, I mean, in some cases, for like accessibility, you might be able to just, one and done, you know, a certain kind of small request. But for some of these bigger projects that really need the tailwinds, and they really need the signal of buy-in from locals, sometimes in order to leverage like summer philanthropy or things like that, this kind of investment would really go a long way um for everybody in this room and beyond. So um you know, what's in the report here kind of summarizes what we found, what kind of organizations exist in the county, um and yeah, just the impact that it would have on on residents here. Any questions?
Yeah, when you said federal dollars, you meant, there's, are there other federal dollars on the table or just the request for ARPA funds?
Uh oh, for the National Heritage Area, yeah, so the way that works, and and I'm not the expert on that, so this is my understanding, um it's still in the planning phase, but once that is officially rolled out, like the strategic plan, which is being spearheaded by Sunrise County Economic Council, that would be the opportunity for organizations um related to heritage, culture, and in some kind of areas of the of agriculture, I believe, as well, to to do a matched request for federal funding, so like in five years from now, someone in this room could have a project that relates to the heritage area concept that exists for Hancock and Washington County as the Down East National Heritage Area, and they could get federal dollars matched, so that's federal money coming into these organizations.
Okay, yeah, that's that.
For programs.
That's Dan LaRoba.
Yeah.
You said uh leveraging federal dollars, I, I think you meant these federal dollars are right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, not in that phrasing, in that phrasing, I meant down the line.
Okay.
So this is an investment to really protect these, these assets that will in the future be able to bring in money, because I mean, as we all know, ARPA goes away this year, so, but we wanna create that, those opportunities.
Yeah, well, we're not sure about ARPA, what's, I mean, there's a lot of things on there.
Fair enough, fair enough, yeah.
Uh are you approaching munis, the individual municipalities also?
Not specifically, I mean, it's, it's a little bit harder to gauge what is remaining, remaining there, I mean, I've done a lot of um my research to inform this request on, I think it's called like pandemic oversight dot gov, um where you can see like how counties are spending and what like um investment areas they're, they're looking at, whether it's like nonprofit assistance, or, you know, tourism experience improvements and things like that. Um and the municipalities, I think, would be something worthwhile to look at down the line, but I'm not sure about the remainders left there, is the thing.
And the reason I ask that question is because our budget comes from municipalities.
Sure.
And and, you know, ARPA funds, I know, are, are, you know, spending ARPA funds elsewhere takes away from. And, and, you know, ARPA funds, I know, are, are, you know, spending ARPA funds elsewhere takes away from, you, you know, municipalities. You understand, I think you understand what I'm saying. Uh, so, in other words, if we're to use funds for county projects, then, then it's equitable. You know, we're ta- we're easing the burden on municipalities, and if we go up, so, so one of the con- challenges we face is so, how do we hold true to, to, you know, our taxpayers?
Yeah.
And, uh, that was the only reason for, for the question.
The more, the more less nuanced answers, we've been using ARPA funds in a lot of ways to try to keep county taxes down without having to raise the taxes even. Uh, later today, you'll see that we'll be doing that, the highest it's been for a while, ever. Um, but, um, so that's one of the ways we.
But certainly an interesting concept. Uh, and you, you outlined, uh, I think it was in your reports, but if you could just refresh me, uh, grants of.
Yeah, the suggestion was twenty-five to a hundred thousand each of twenty grants.
Yeah.
So that, you know, there's a significant chunk made. And I did a little bit of an analysis on what, um, uh, other counties are spending on, and I, I very much appreciate everything that you're saying, especially right now in this, in this economy, as they say. But this is really, in a lot of ways, a stimulus investment in a once, in a generation, let's, let's hope that, you know, we never have something again that generates this kind of um, emergency response funding, but this is an opportunity to do something that will, long-term, really, really benefit county residents, and also, you know, this, the stimulus from investments in culture are like really well documented, and I can say more about that, but the amount of money that gets brought in, like when you go see a show, like at the Opera House, you're not just seeing a show, you're paying a babysitter, you're going to a restaurant, you're going to a business. When you go to the library, you're getting your shopping gun to downtown while you're out, there's a, there's a lot to it, and I know that you know that and how all of that works, but I think that the thing here is that it is, I think, deferred maintenance does eventually get ex- get expensive, and it's an opportunity cost, obviously, as well, if you don't take care of these things, I mean, down the street, the Ellsworth Library with like the retaining walls, for example, I mean, that's a very real concrete need, and it's very, very difficult to find funding for that. And once these resources are gone or go into disuse, like they don't come back, like, we don't, we don't do those things anymore, so it's a maintenance issue that, you know, I think is really worth considering alongside, I know a lot of other worthy requests that you have.
I think, uh, I mean, we always had a vision, I think, we started at some point, we needed grants again. Uh, we kind of put it off, uh, during the middle section, cause we wanted to see where things were gonna be with uh, broadband and things like that, uh, to see where we were at, what we'd spent, we didn't wanna over commit to anything.
Sure.
Uh, but I think the proposal's strong and it makes a lot of sense. I think we still need to kind of look and see our big picture, like, okay, so, have we got our, what commitments do we have right now? Uh, how much do we wanna set aside for further grants? Uh, I'm a fan of the idea that, you know, going to the, yeah, or the cultural organizations, my background is, you know, like a master's in fine arts, so appreciation for that, understanding the importance, so, uh, I'm a little bit sympathetic here, probably on.
Well, and, you know, my feeling, we still don't know how it's gonna shake out when the end date for this is, and this makes sense, and how, uh, how would you envision, um, you know, awarding grants, uh, is, I mean, obviously, it would be county participation in that, but we thought that out, I mean, that would be something if this were to come to fruition, that we'd have to iron out.
Yeah, absolutely, um, you know, I think personally what I would do, if, if, if it were me, you know, Main Community Foundation is up the street and they're grant makers by profession, so I might just ask for their advice about how one might scope this. They're not involved in capital investment grants, per se, I mean, they have a couple of like very tiny ones, but I think that they would be able to easily advise on the criteria, and that's, you know, a phone call, I'm certainly happy to make to learn more about the process and how that might work.
Well, and, Michael, I'm not sure how capital investments fit into the loss revenue portion of this, which is basically what this would be, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think for the most part, uh, it's one of the things that I, I had initial meeting with our consultant last week, just to kind of give a brief overview of everything that's going on. I mean, that's one of the things we have to sit back down, or I don't know, should've been trying to be on line, trying um, to kind of see how any of this might fit in and where it would fit in, and then, you know, what. Ultimately, if there were criteria and stuff, that's probably some of the stuff that she would work on helping develop to put together a plan, if that's, you know, where you end up being, so.
Cause I know there, there was some, capital investments were, how they fit in.
There is some reference in there about capital investments and being towards like the no-no list, so, that's what I'm saying, we would definitely rely on the consultant to really let us know, uh, based on her experience and knowledge and the grants and the work that she's done, uh, for the ARPA funding, I should say in this case, what, where she thinks that would all fit.
Yeah, and then it would be interesting to know, you know, you said you had data or preliminary data from other counties being interested, how they tackle this, because you know, there, again, I don't have the ARPA funding criteria in front of me, but there, there's a couple of things that
Yeah.
uh, came to mind, but it'd be interesting to know how they dealt with it.
Yeah, what, what jumped out at me was, you know, in York County, under the category, and this is how it was, you know, recorded, the category was called aid to tourism, travel and hospitality, and I think they, I wanna say they dredged the harbor or something like that. I don't know exactly the, the linkage there, but I think what we're talking about today, you know, especially given the context of uh, what's coming down the pipe for Hancock County, and not that we're not touristy now already, obviously. Um, but I would think that this aid to tourism, travel and hospitality and, and investment, you know, like dredging the harbor, like, you know, reinforcement wall, right, it kind of follows, uh, under that category. And there's obviously, as you know, because you very, very kindly offered this early on, the assistance to nonprofit organizations, clearly there are still lingering impacts, of course, from this, there are still enormous revenue holes, especially in, you know, where there's been audiences that once we're allowed to, like, work, you know, um, so, I, I, but I, I very much, I'm very willing and eager to do a little more research there.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. You've been excellent and very helpful, I just wanna pig up Michael.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience, and so, I, I know what you wanted to meet with us, you know, prior, during budget season, but thank you for
Thank you.
Made it a lot easier.
Thank you.
I'll start some later. Can we work a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we were planning on having a follow-up meeting anyway, so, certainly we'll go through and, um, yeah, she didn't get a chance to participate or listen in today, and certainly she'll do reporting as well, and then both of us can be just kind of overview where we're at and then report back to the commissioner.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
If you, to be able to prove where your ARPA money went. Sounds like they support this.
Honestly, like it, yeah. Yeah, I'm on.
I'm on, Miller.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning. We've got your monthly report.
Anything to add, Miller, or?
No.
Yeah, I'm gonna move to accept and file the UT monthly report as presented.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Miller, one thing I want to, before we get going further, I think we need to make a decision on the Commissioners actually touring the UT and, uh, actually have it happen this year instead of just talk about it.
Wow.
So, I want you, I want us to look at having a, a tour happen, uh, we can look at the schedule, see if the second meeting, uh, if that would work, let's try to like pencil that in as an idea, that like after that meeting, we would do the, the tour of the UT.
Right.
We'll see for everybody.
Excuse me, John, second meeting of which month?
Uh, sorry, June.
June, okay.
Month season.
Maybe it'll be direct.
Month season will be over by then. Butterfly season.
June's tough, but I think we're good, yeah.
Nope. Later, it's even harder.
Yeah. It's, and then we get in the same position we're in now.
Yeah, so let's, let's try to figure that one out, okay?
Thanks.
Uh, we have some, uh, approvals of the ACO agreements?
Uh, just dive into them, do you have anything to add, Miller, or?
Well, there's, there's two of us showing them, uh.
Yep, just what we did before, okay, so I'm gonna move to approve the regional MOU control agreement between the Town of Stonington and Hancock County as presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
I'm gonna move to approve the regional ACL MOU between the Town of Stonington and the, and Hancock County as presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Anything else, Miller?
Um, well, I have a question for the Commissioners, do you need me present for, uh, agenda items nineteen D and E?
Uh.
I.
Do you mean present here or present on?
Presence on, it's not gonna be executive session, I could do it on Zoom, couldn't I?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, except for the executive session. Which in theory.
Yeah, I don't see it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, if we ca- if we need to, we can call, right?
I su- I support both, so.
Okay.
I think you're good.
Yeah, we're fine.
You're fine.
Well, it didn't, it didn't get addressed in the, uh, in the public hearing section, but it is important for everyone to realize that this, um, solar array was, um, rezoned by the LUPC and it was approved by DEP. All the Commissioners are doing is getting the, uh, TIF financing and the community benefit money. I mean, if we don't accept those, we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
And, and this isn't, this is land within the UT, not owned by the UT.
Right.
I think that's an important aspect, but, yeah. All right.
I think that's all we, unless you have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Miller.
All right, do we have Leroy on the line?
Uh, yes, you do. So, only a cou- only a couple of quick little notes to the, uh, monthly report, uh, Charlie from Lewis and Moll did call yesterday, and we had a pretty good talk about the terminal building, old section and its issues. So that may, uh, we may work a little more on that. And, um, Jacob's VP of Aviation Division came and met with Michael and I on the thirty-first, so, we expressed our concerns, they know what our concerns are, so hopefully we, we've got those aired and that'll cure some issues moving forward, but other than that, the report stands.
Great, so I'm gonna move to accept and file an airport monthly report as presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I got a couple of, uh, items here, the, uh, University of Maine would like to have a short-term lease on an area down at the Seaplane Ranch. Just like to have permission to, uh, negotiate with them, that's what that item is all about.
So I've looked it over, and I'm gonna move to approve the airport manager negotiating with the University of Maine for a short-term land lease on airport property with the understanding that such land lease will be brought back to the Commission, their review and approval prior to signing.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
And the last one is the GSA, which is looking for some office space in the terminal, we're going to, the space has been used as a, a break room for airport tenants. Um, it, it, it's okay, I guess, at this point, uh, to, um, release that and let, let, let's get some income out of it, I, I reached out to the tenants, I got real no response yea or nay on whether they, they're feeling on the break room, so with, with that being said, I guess, um, let's, let's work with it, with the GSA folks and generate a little income out of that hundred and seventy-two square feet.
The note rates.
Yeah, yeah, no, no breaks, that's right.
All right. So, i- i- is the idea to just have TSA off, TSA office space, or is it to move their operation? Cause they have a lot of.
Off, office space, so, a- as well you know, they had some up the road. And, that, that's turned into, with summer traffic, a little bit of a, a heartache for them, so. I think what they're trying to do is get, they, they really want to, to set up, uh, either a trailer or some sort of office space on property, but, uh, for the short term, this will help them out, and then we'll possibly sort out something later on, as we, as Paul, you may remember, when, when TSA first started, they had that double wide sitting out in the field here between the parking lots. Um, plus that went away, then, then they rented some space from us at Columbia, and then they went off airport. Um, now they're trying to get back on airport to, their concern is, is they're off airport, they can't get back here due to the road closure, due to, uh, an accident or something, then, then there's, you know, screening issues and so on, so, I kind of understand it.
Approve the airport manager negotiating with the US General Service Administration for office space in the terminal building to and to bring such lease back to the Commissioners for review and approval prior to signing the lease. And the reason it's with GSA is that's who handles all leasing.
Government.
Same as TSA wants to.
Right, for the government, yeah.
Must second the motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Leroy. Do we have Andy?
I'm gonna move to accept and file the EMA monthly report as presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
So this looks like coming back with exactly what we asked for.
Yeah, doesn't matter whether you wanna act on.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, it's what we decided to move forward with for, um, I'm gonna move to approve the person. Uh, known before, security awareness training, there's been subscription of the silver level for sixty months for the grand total of, uh, that's five years, sixty months, for a grand total of six thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-six tons. Such funds to be paid for using ARPA funds.
Why don't we, uh, I'll second it, while we have some discussion, can you, uh, give us a quick review again?
Okay.
Uh, as a cybersecurity officer, keeping everybody trained and up to date on the different attacks that we're undergoing, a lot of things are changing. Uh, for instance, something recently that just came up is now the little QR codes that you can scan with your phone, now they're malicious. So now data's getting into every aspect and avenue that it can, with the event of AI being leveraged by bad actors. Uh, attacks are becoming more sophisticated and complicated, you can't detect them as easily as before, cause usually the people who put forth the attack, uh, weren't native English speakers. Now is the easiest way to find it, because their English and grammar's all off. Now it's being directed, now there's, uh, targeted attacks where they will call you on your phone and leave a message, and then want you to respond, then they'll attack you from that end. Things have changed significantly. Things have changed significantly. And it's my job as a cybersecurity officer to keep everybody up to date. I can only do so much. Uh, Know Before is one of the top and leading, uh, companies that are presenting this knowledge and making sure that everybody's getting trained. Uh, I came in last year, my first, uh, couple months, and I tried to get a baseline done doing the FEMA nine oh six, uh, workplace safety. And I did a lot of great things. I did, uh, perimeter security, physical security, people looking at the cameras and taking pictures and things like that. Then it came in at the end. It did some computer stuff, which was good. I needed to have that baseline so that I could build off of that. I don't want to keep doing the FEMA nine oh six. Once you've done it once, it becomes very boring and you don't want to do it again. Uh, Know Before has proven to keep people entertained as they are educated. So that's going to work to our benefits.
And there's a whole track, uh, tracking aspect of it.
That is correct.
Yeah, so it's keep track of who's been trained, who, when they're due for training, that kind.
Exactly, yep. Very much just like, uh, the CEGIS training that is required for the sheriff's side. Uh, I don't keep track of that, but then, uh, when the CEGIS, uh, is performed every year now, now it's updated, then I don't have to require them to, uh, be as, uh, as fluent, but yes, I will include them in this training. That's why there's a hundred and five. Uh, the county side is not requiring the CEGIS training. We'll definitely need this in order to keep up to date. I want to keep us safe. I want to keep us out of newspapers. You've noticed recently that a lot of things have been popping up, a lot of little towns, a lot of schools, the water, uh, districts and things like that are now becoming uh, the targets of attack because they're easy prey. Don't want us to be easy prey.
So five years?
It's a five-year contract. Uh, thing that came to mind as I was walking through the door was, uh,
Is it so, is it considered sole source? I'm sure Clark was wondering, is there, is there more than?
Oh, oh, there's, there's several companies up there that provide this service, but Know Before is preemptively the best rated. There are other sources, aye. And that was, that was my fault for not bringing those particularly. I, I had them in here, but then focused my nail on this one because they they are gold standard.
Well, in prior presentations, there were two other. It got narrowed down to Know Before, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
You think this has been noted, okay, Paul?
Yeah, I mean, we're going back, what, three, two or three meetings here?
Yeah, three or four meetings, yeah.
Uh, you had, that presentation had there were two other, um, I don't know if there were two, there was at least one of them. And we had, you had made a presentation on, uh, handoff paper of why this one was the per vendor.
Yeah.
So in my feeling, yes.
We're trying to also make sure we have a longer contract, trying to use the
Yeah.
ARPA funds while we could. Stayed out.
Yeah.
And, uh, talking about upper funds and funding, an, an idea that came to me as I came in was the, uh, possibility that, uh, that Ms. Sax will, uh, talk to us at her, uh, uh, leadership meeting was that there are funds out there for training. And it's like, well, for two dollars, part of, we might be going forward. We could use those three or four dollars from that particular, uh, program to keep this alive.
Yeah, we've sort of touched on that also during your presentation.
Yeah, funding. Force development.
Yeah, that's an idea that Chuck and I keep in our mind all the time. It's like, if we do get this, how are we going to continue to fund it? How are we going to continue to keep it alive? Because it's like, great, hey, let's spend all this money, get this great program and everything works great, but then comes year five, you need the contract and then you're looking at it, you're like, where are we going to get this money? So we're, we're coming to that as we look at these programs.
All right, my call vote. If you, she has something else to say. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Uh, last week, uh, medical writer, jail, she's doing it away from individual facilities. She's going to work away out of that process. With that being said, she's working for a larger vendor. We had a conversation with him yesterday. She has no numbers yet. We've also talked to another, their family nurse practitioner that's willing to is interested in coming in and doing the same process she's doing now, just filling her. We do have options. Just wanted to update where we are, that, that she had brought that last, that she made. Actually, but she's agreed for to stay do on our contract until we decide which animal we're going to go with. She's on a side of drives, so. She's working on this, just giving updates on that.
So you're essentially going to get together some numbers?
Yes, we'll bring them to you. We're actually speaking with her today, um, to advise her, we've gone two different directions. See if she's changed her mind, decided to stay or what, but, um, but we are gonna, we have an ongoing conversation. We're hoping to have numbers today, qualify a figure, but I mean, we're neither one providing, one question, we still used to be, so.
And it sounds like she's willing to CS three process.
Yes, she is. She's going to stay with us. She's hoping that, there's the larger vendor that, um, she'd recommend that she's actually working for. She'd stay on, but she's working. Um, as you know, the bigger companies are full on you, so. And that's the bank of the block.
Well, there's also, you know, the, you know, you're not always having to be in this situation, you know. Maybe they have, so there'll be that the way too.
Right. So, yeah, there's a lot of, when you feel like coming up to us, I think we get to that point, but I just wanted to know where we are in case you hear something.
Thank you. All right, now we've got our radio proposal.
Yes.
Well, that will.
First is.
Yeah, we have other items.
Oh, sorry. Uh, oh, yeah.
I'm gonna move to approve firing Keith Trandy as full-time corrections officer, full benefits of pay grade nine, effective two ten twenty-four.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye, aye. I didn't mean to preempt your. Okay.
Um, jail radios, because of the frequency of the jail, the tablets and all the, um, wifi here, the jail's interfering with the PH, PHF frequency. Looking to go for the UHF frequency. Uh, we've tried one. Uh, we have communication protocol facility, all the security court, we've never had. Looking to purchase twenty-seven, we're going to go with twenty-five. We just have, but we've been issuing radios. It's going well. Give us their own radio and it takes care of the property. General radius, looking to purchase twenty-seven, um, radios with sole source of Brown's Communication, which has been our provider since I've been here for thirteen years, from, and I know the share's starting a lot longer than that. Um, they've been very good. Rapid response and issues, they deal with us. Um, so I'm seeking twenty-seven radios from the ARPA funds of fourteen thousand five hundred eighty dollars with a sole source of Brown's Communication.
Do you know how long it took us to get new radios?
We've inspired some off and on. Um, the last big catch is the hand downs from the shares, when they were, were all digital, um, was able to pick up their radios and we just we've been peace feeling since I think we have that one.
Well, that sounds like those were PHF and
Right.
problem that you had. Uh, okay, so I'm gonna move to approve the purchase of twenty-seven portable radios with chargers for the jail, uh, from Brown's Communication as a sole source purchase for the price of fourteen thousand five hundred eighty dollars to be paid for from ARPA funds as requested.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
So I guess I should ask this question and you touched on it. The test went well with the song.
Yes, yep.
That's it. Okay.
So also a new van that's got a new radio, um, looking to purchase the new ra- this is exactly the same radio that we purchased for the, um, AC. So that's what they recommended. I have no idea. This is the recommendation that Brown put together saying that's what we, we should have as digital, so we could speak to the county.
Need help if you need it.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, I'm gonna move to prove purchase uh, of one mobile u- unit radio for the new jail van from Brown's Communication. It's a sole source purchase for the purchase price of three thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars from ARPA funds.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye, aye. And, and that I agree with the sole source. I mean, those are, those are, um, you know, pretty important piece of equipment. Something happens, you, the ability to fix it quickly.
They, they've always given us some issues, I think.
Local.
And the last thing is request to move load Algar off of the county payroll effective two ten twenty-four.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
I have the phone goes here. Okay, you want, he'll sign them and give them to me. You want to sign them so I can have them for the for the major video. You'll just send us a signed, signed copy of the report. Thank you. Morning.
Morning. I didn't see you go to that corner. Sorry.
Got, uh, three proposals for you. They've opened some.
So I'm gonna move to approve the district attorney to advertise an RFP for DA cruisers requested.
Second motion. Uh, any discussion gentlemen have about it?
Well, this, this is what we discussed during the, uh, during the budget process.
Did you have motion saved for our? Or we just just went up to the door?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Request for purchasing equipment.
Before you make a motion on this, monitor how difficult is it to pay directly for ARPA funds? Items like seventy-five dollars, hundred and twenty dollars, I mean, is it? Is it like, it's just like a, a regular budget? Can you do that?
Yes, any, any amount.
Any amount, okay, so we don't have to designate bulk amount, then you just.
Uh, I guess I'm not sure what you're.
Well, I guess, yes.
You're basically saying they, they would say like on a certain amount of, of equipment up to whatever or something in that effect.
Oh, pieces of equipment?
Yeah. I'm just trying to see if you have a lot of extra work.
Yeah, I would make it one category for the purchase of equipment for the DA.
But you could, you could do it a hundred and twenty dollars and tell it.
Yes.
Seventy-five.
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
Yeah, because this is all different vendors and I think it's why you're asking that question.
Yep.
Well, I just curious if there was a way to, to do it as a bulk from, I don't know. Go to another account. Itemize it, but if you itemize it right in the app, that's fine. That's, I think, I understand. So.
So I, I'm gonna move to approve the purchase of equipment for the new DA detective investigator position. And in amount not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, such equipment to be paid for from ARPA funds is requested. And again, this is, this is an item that was carried over for the budget process, moved out of the budget and the ARPA to have less impact on our communities.
And I'll second the motion. All right, what other discussion do we have?
Sounds like we're, we haven't vetted this, but we certainly did during the budget process.
Um, be concerned that's couple of these patents might exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. Would, uh, if you come to back to us, get approval for these or are we just authorizing this more by?
Uh.
Well, portable radios is going to be to Brown, right, because we consider them sole source.
Yeah, all this.
Almost everything else, I don't think we're going to be at twenty-five hundred dollars on, I mean, she sees something.
Yes. And, and even though we're authorized, that's a clear that's an amount over, over the, uh, uh, threshold that needs to go through the person policy. My, my right, it would go through the person.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
But we could do one that extra step if we acknowledge today, they're going to buy that seventy-nine hundred dollars mobile radio from Brown's, which they've already been sole source for mobile radio equipment.
Like when the sheriff does this equipment cruisers and that, like, how do you think, a lot of times it's the the, you just doing that. You know, like, the, the different weapons have to to, 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 to make some decision. That, uh, people themselves are doing, it's just something special.
In researching these prices, if they already have hopes on.
Yeah. I mean, just fill it there and just purchase. Because you're good to go. Yeah. Could you vote on it? Yeah.
All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna move to approve firing Timothy Cody as the DA detective investigator. The pay grade fifteen with starting salary of thirty-five seventy-three effective three two twenty-four.
Second motion. All right, any other discussion?
Uh, and again, this was what we discussed during the budget process and we've gone through the hiring process with HIR. Yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, Dennis?
Anything? Uh, no, unless there are questions. Accept and file that our, the uh, maintenance monthly report is presented.
Second.
Aye.
All right, here's interest. Score of the options.
Right. You see the, uh, proposal there from P L Shae?
I do, and I'm very confused.
Okay.
Uh, option A, option B, option C, option D. Uh, it looks like they all stand on their own, with the exception of B and C, it's either or. Is that true or am I?
Yeah, uh, yes, it is, and there are other options as well. The only one I recommend, uh, actually today is number one, to, to design and rebuild that foyer that was damaged. Demo, what we discovered was, uh, that the decay in the concrete on the slab outside had migrated in under that door frame a little bit and then the jury, on the landing, the concrete panel to the right was free and loose and had been pushed in and caused the entire wall inside the, uh, the foyer around the elevator to be smashed up, destroyed the ceiling. So all of those, replace those panels and the door and rebuild that wall and ceiling. It's what that.
So that's option A.
Yes.
So you're just asking about option, asking for approval on option A?
Yes, the other, I'd like to discuss the other, the second option, which is, uh, uh, which is milling out or reseal, resealing the windows on the tower. I think that's the most, most viable solution to what we're looking at for repair. Uh, compared with the third option, which is replacing those windows. uh, compared with the third option, which is replacing those windows. I mean, that, that's something that if we decide to address the entire tower and the way it's configured, you might consider something of that scope. But I think we can fix those windows. And with respect to, uh, option two, the cost twenty-three and change, whatever it is, is mostly due to the fact they'd have to have like an eighty-foot lift here to get up over the retaining wall and up to the top level.
So we're talking about really option C, we have listed, right, repair, cog, existing.
Yes, yes, C is what I was going to mention, exactly.
But, but.
And we may have other means to do that, pipe station, for instance, which would be a lot cheaper than that.
But C is an option, then we don't take B, is that correct?
Yes. We would be taking out, and the trouble is that they, there's, it's such a small space in between, side to side, eight feet or so, that there's no room to move the windows to get them up into that place, so it's really, they have to bring a hoist from the outside to do it, and.
How we paid for this? We decided to, well, suggestion is.
It is, because this is, we're considering.
Acting on this specific, it's kind of giving you an update, but this is kind of, this first part of it was what was explored after they did the other work. And then, the other windows you hadn't really talked about.
This is eligible for ARPA funds?
We would have to confirm that, again, I'd, I'd double check to make sure that, that that's.
Is there, is this a project for ARPA funds?
Yes, and we're, we're considering that.
I mean, the, the face, front face one, I would assume, since we did that, yes, I'm, I'm talking about the windows one.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and the windows one, you're not asking for approval, you're just, that's, this is just information that.
It is, and I think, uh, we're going to end up with maybe doing something that's a hybrid of those.
But I mean, it needs to be part of the discussion, because it seems like it would be part of this first.
Yeah, that's, that's right, Monica, because what we did was when we had the damage to the storefront, we treated this project as an addendum or an add-on to the shared steps project. And then, if this kind of takes on a life of its own and doesn't, uh, pass a straight phase test or an add-on, the windows, we'll treat them as a separate item, but the gathering of the information, it made sense to do it all at once while we, while we had them.
Well, considering we have once in a lifetime opportunity to correct this without using taxpayer money, because of local taxpayer money, I think doing anything less is putting a little stick on a pig.
Yeah.
I really think that we should go replace everything, get it back to original shape, guarantee that we're not going to have to deal with the game for another twenty-five, thirty years hopefully, and pay for it from now, so I'd like to see. And the other problem is, is that when you have somebody like E.L. Shea on site, keep them here. If he leaves, goes somewhere, he's going to be forever getting that.
Or anyone, you're right.
I know, I know a company right now, and I was waiting two and a half years to get E.L. Shea to come and build, to do construction. So let's, while we're done here, let's approve this project, let's get it going, get it on the books, keep them here, get it done, and pay for it.
So are we talking a combined price then of A and?
Between A and C is what, or A and B, rather.
A and B.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, if I'm correct, I'm saying that we do A and B.
Okay.
And we both D.
With D, yeah.
Is that an addition, that's the south facing piece of windows?
Uh, yeah, this is the other side of the, the damaged area.
Is it the exterior window, or is it the one inside?
It's exterior, outside window, it is. It's that little jog that jobs up, goes across, that's now, if you're sitting in the foyer at the desk, the sheriff's foyer, that's that for air windows. The storefront is out in the elevator foyer, these are, are, some are all of the ones inside.
Inside that first door. And I suggest that we, we do those at the same time.
Well, it'd be a great face.
So how, uh, confident are we in the estimate though, I guess, on?
Uh, there's, we're pretty confident, and I'm.
I just didn't want it to be like, oh, yeah, next thing you know.
If you have a question, it is, Mike Becker might be on the screen here.
I am on Zoom.
Is, is this a bid price, or is this a pretty accurate estimation?
This is accurate. I'm comfortable with it being accurate.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is A, B, D, which is two forty-eight, six fifty-one. Is that what you're suggesting?
No. And I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want a, a motion though that locks him into that figure. But I would like to somehow authorize A, B, and D in hopes that we can get that, you know, within the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Well, actually, Monica and I would have a strategy that adds ten percent as a contingent, just to handle those.
So if we say two-fifty plus ten percent contingent?
I'd be comfortable with that, Mike?
I'm comfortable with that.
So Paul, can you agree to that, this motion?
Yeah, because I have these numbers up and it's, it's two forty-eight, six fifty-one, so you're saying call that two-fifty?
Plus a ten percent contingent.
Plus a ten percent.
You call it contingency, don't you call it?
Yeah, or something, in, just in case.
I'm just curious what the terminology should.
So, let me read this just a, move the, our E.L. Shea perform, uh, work indicated options A, B, and D, a proposal from E.L. Shea to the Hancock County Commissioners. A, B, and D describes the work, so, uh, for work to the county, uh, county building. Well, we're also throwing in the towers there, that's why I was, okay, let me read it.
If you could reference the January twelfth, twenty.
Yes, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to move hire, uh, E.L. Shea to perform the work indicated options, uh, A, B, and D, the proposal from E.L. Shea to Hancock County Commissioners, uh, for storefront lobby and windows dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-four, that's what this is dated, right? Yeah. For the sum of up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars with a ten percent contingency, such funds to be paid from ARPA funds. Is that, are we comfortable enough to make that, Michael and Monica? You know, are we comfortable enough paying for it out of ARPA for me to say that?
I mean.
And to be paid for, you didn't say those.
So you including your motion, I can, if there's concern, I can double check with Kitty to see what her powers are as well.
And if there is, you would come back?
Then I would have to come back, but if not.
Okay, it seems to me that stay is qualified, this project should, I don't see a difference.
I, I don't either, I just try and make sure.
And I'm not saying there is, just.
Well, certainly it's not going to get to work though, before we check, so I think it's safe enough to make that, prove that motion is in, at the back of the question.
Everybody clear what I said? If that's your motion?
It is.
I'll second.
And once we do this, and it's all done, I don't ever have to hear about these steps. I don't have to hear about these steps.
Which I am.
For, you know, six years.
Yeah, I know. I know, yeah.
Those steps have been there fifty years. Yeah, we've never done a thing to them, so.
Yeah, I.
You will live long.
Our role in those, those steps will, our role will be fulfilled, I think.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's awesome, thank you gentlemen so much, that's a great investment.
Uh, just wanted to bring your attention, a couple things, there, we got a couple little big storms that caused a lot of damage, it kept us pretty down to stache. The other item that has brought to my attention and stuff are statewide nine-one call for, uh, Hancock County is one of those, that during the summertime months, our call line is basically doubled. That's pretty significant, since most of the other shit didn't do that.
Actually, of course.
Yeah, yeah, and I didn't check, I didn't recognize that.
So I'm going to move accepted file, RCC monthly report is presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Taxes for open position?
Uh, I move to authorize human resource manager to advertise the open dispatch position.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Morning, anyway. Okay, I'm going to move to accept the, uh, I move to accept the file of human resource monthly report is presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Refresh my memory, somebody, uh, we've already approved their re-advertising.
So you haven't officially, but that was one of the questions coming up with commissions, we're just trying to seek clarity on what the policy is for commission. Like, if we have an existing position that we know is vacant, and we know we need to fill, can't we just advertise it without coming back and asking the commission? That, that's what nineteen eighty basically just, and the same thing with new budgeted positions.
Do we have that in here, so?
Yeah.
My feeling is this, that budgeted position, it's, we know that it's going to happen. If there was a question, I think they will come to us. I don't see this coming to us, but that's my feeling.
Well, I can tell you, originally, when this was discussed many, many years ago, the issue was, was that, should we review this to see is the position still necessary? Can it be combined with, you know, that kind of a preview? I can tell you, over the years, it's never happened, it's never been a case where we done away with the position when it became vacant, or we combined that, you know, because of a vacancy, now, we, we had combines, I, I'm saying that that's the purpose, that they thought they, they wanted to accomplish when they first did this, is really, was really unnecessary, so I, I, I agree with you, Paul. Department heads and the county administrator take care of this, let us know when time comes to approve it.
Yeah, and, and my feeling is that if county administrator and staff felt that there was, you know, an opportunity to do something like that, I, that's possible, they would come to us.
Or if there was any question, or there had been a discussion before, about even a discussion during budget time, then obviously.
Yeah.
We'd come, and when in doubt, we'd come and ask you.
Yeah.
It's just because we've done it a couple ways, even within the last year, that's where department heads were coming to me, saying, are we supposed to do this now, or not? And I said, well, just, I'll ask John, and John's supposed to just have a conversation with everybody, and then we'll just clear it up and move forward, so.
And, and, you know, i- if we got in a position where we needed to do that, you know, because of budget constraints or something, then we revisit it then.
And this is, this is a good example, Paul, of exactly what we're seeing, because originally you wanted to change what used to be a clerk's job to an administrative assistant, and bring that to us, we approved that, but now you have that in place. It's just a matter of finding a candidate to fill it, which we don't have to approve, there's no reason for us to get involved in this.
I agree.
All right.
That's the direction you needed, right?
Yeah, I'm skipping over the turnovers.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yes, that's all.
I'm going to move to approve the monthly bills and grants as presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye. Yeah, we started talking about that, the guys of human resources, so thank you for getting us back on track.
All right, we have our recapitulation assessment. Motion crafted.
I do, uh, and Monica, please check me as I'm reading.
Sure.
I'm going to move to approve and sign the recapitulation assessment of county taxes as presented with a total amount of eight million, six hundred and seven thousand, no, uh, six hundred and seven, eight million, six hundred and seven thousand ninety-three dollars to be raised by taxation.
Okay with that, Monica?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion of it?
Go ahead, that's a lot.
You have any money off anywhere this way? Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So we don't need a motion for B?
No, I mean, I think.
I agree. Okay, move to appoint the daily bound of knobscott service one of it, the Hancock County representatives on the Hancock County Planning Commission's executive board is recommended.
I'll second it for discussion.
Just wonder why is it weird or stupid to get the, I mean, it's part of their, it's part of their.
Yeah, we, we appoint them.
The county planning commission is not, not a quasi government of the county, and for them to make that part of their policy, I mean, it's like me saying, so we'll, I'm going to have the city council approving all, you know, for the council, that's what I'm thinking, that'd be something, I mean, I just don't, I don't.
So, I, I mean, if you want to table this, I can go get the additional information, but I believe when I, when we looked at this originally, that there was actually some statutory provision contained within the language that authorized and so on, specifies that there will be two members' funds accounted, now whether or not their actual records, which we could ask, you know, their, their procedures involve or appointments indicates that they're going to rely on a recommendation from the county, that's kind of what I understood, but I would have to pull all that data just so you'd have it, but I understood there was statutory reference to having at least those two positions on there.
Because I remember we did this before, we had a very similar question, and it was, as I remember, the answer is that they're to make recommendations and we're to appoint them. That's how I remember.
So these are officially the two representatives who represent the county, that's how I remember.
The way I understand it, but I can, I mean, if you want to feel overly comfortable so that you both are all three of you know where we're at, I can pull that additional data and you can act on it, I mean, we spent a few weeks now anyway, a few more weeks is probably not going to dramatically impact this if you want that.
I would also like to know what statutory requirements we have regarding the planning commission. Been so personally about getting it back into the, the thousand seventeen. Is, because there was some allegation that people supported statutory.
So, uh, okay, so that motion was on the table and seconded, so you're just wanting me to table this forward for action, right?
Aye.
Okay, so I'm going to move table action on this item till, uh, till further information from the, for further information from the county administrators at fair.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so this is the item that I inserted before we take action on, on the next two. So I'm going to move to go into executive session as permitted by one MRSA four oh five sixteen, consultation with legal counsel concerning the Three Rivers Solar contracts.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I go to executive session.